All right, folks, let me call the meeting to order. This is a regularly scheduled Greer City Council meeting, called and convened this February 10th, 2015. Having called the meeting to order, I'd like to ask Councilman Riley Bettis, if he would, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance and then our invocation. If you will stand and join us for votes, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. We thank you, Father, for all of your blessings. We know that only by your commandments will we be worthy. We are grateful for your plan of salvation, and let us not be misled by false theologies or cults. May we treat our neighbors, whether they be individuals or other elected bodies, as we would want to be treated, and help us to have freedom-loving, God-fearing, truth-telling leaders at all levels of governance that make decisions pleasing you. And pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
We thank you for joining us this evening. We've got a full house and some special recognitions to make a little bit later on in the meeting, although we do set aside time at the first of the meeting for public forum. This is an opportunity for citizens to speak to items that may be pertinent to our agenda this evening. Ms. Duncan, do we have anybody to appear in public forum?
No, sir.
Having no one to appear in public forum, we'll move on into the minutes of the council meeting. Council, you have the January 27th minutes in your meeting, January 27th, 2015. I'll entertain a motion that they be received.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any items of note for the clerk this evening? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
The first of the special recognitions that we have this evening is an opportunity to recognize one of our employees that will be retiring. I'm going to ask Dan Kane, if he would, to come up this evening. Dan, this is a certificate of appreciation that says, "Congratulations upon your retirement from the City of Greer, presented in appreciation of five years of dedicated service to the City of Greer, October 4th, 2010 to February 3rd, 2015." Mr. Dan Kane, and we want to make this presentation to you in terms of this certificate of appreciation. And we've also got a small gift for you as well, too.
Thank you.
We want to present that to you on behalf of the city and thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Join me in giving that around. Mr. Grigors?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. As we begin my report this evening, we would like to recognize a group of folks that are with us this evening that have been involved in writing essays for our Black History Month competition. Julia has been involved with our folks and I think wants to give us just a couple of moments of introduction to the program and how our students have been involved. We've had an opportunity to recognize them at a reception a little bit earlier, but we also want to present some prizes to those folks this evening, but more especially publicly recognize their work.
Good evening, mayor and council. So, a little bit earlier, and if some of you were there, we've had a small reception for our winners. All six of our winners are here this evening. The 2015 Black History Month essay contest was opened up to all middle and high school students in the area. We received over 130 entries that represented seven schools in total. So, I would like to ask that all of our winners please rise. Quickly go through them. In third place for middle school, we have Chandler Back. Second place is Jasmine May. In first place in middle school is Kaia Anderson. In high school, third place Nicole Schaefer. Second place is Amber McNeil. In first place was Carolina Laura. Thank you all for participating, and we hope to see, I don't think there were any seniors, so I hope to see all of these submit essays next year. Thank you very much.
In addition to that information, only a couple of calendar items. We do remind you that council will be in retreat at our next meeting. That'll be on February the 24th. We will gather that afternoon for a series of planning meetings on Tuesday afternoon. We'll have a short break, and then we will go into your regular scheduled council meeting that Tuesday evening, and then we reconvene on Wednesday, and we'll be together all day on that following Wednesday. So, half-day on Tuesday, the 24th, into your regular council meeting that evening, and then all day on Wednesday, the 25th. So, we look forward to that. Meeting have submitted some items for us for consideration. We've received those, and we're certainly including those in our discussion plans for that Tuesday and Wednesday. Couple of items just to make you aware. One of those is that our police department is sponsoring a youth citizens academy this coming summer. We've had great success with that program with our adult community over the years, and our school resource officers have approached us and asked for the opportunity to do a similar program with our young people, and we're going to be scheduling that this coming summer. So, you'll see some more information concerning our youth citizens academy sponsored through our police department. The other item is that we have recently received the results of our ISO analysis for our fire department. You'll hear some information relative to the ISO report, but we do intend to bring that to you on the evening of the 24th as a full report as well. We'll be providing a copy of that to you. The good news, or the short answer in that, is that we have maintained our ISO Class II rating within the fire department. There's been some shifts with some of the numbers, and we'll cover some of that information, particularly in our report at the next meeting, but you'll hear a little more information on that this evening as well. One of the things that we wanted to make council aware of is we have received our market analysis report concerning the Allen Bennett Memorial Hospital campus. As you are aware, we have retained the services of Kimley Horn to look at that property as well as to look at the market and what we would consider to be the highest and best uses of that property as we continue to move forward. I've asked Mr. Reno Deaton if he would to assist with providing some information concerning that. I'll simply ask Mr. Deaton if he'll come to the podium, and then we will have an opportunity to take a look at the report which has been provided to you, and then Mr. Deaton and myself will certainly be available to answer any questions that you may have concerning that. But we really bring it to you this evening as a matter of information, but we want to particularly highlight some of the findings in that report. So, as I begin to do that, Mr. Deaton, you may have some opening comments that you wish to make as well.
Oh, no, I know, council, you've already spent many, many hours poring over the market analysis, and it's very thorough. We're certainly grateful to Kimley Horn for the great job that they did. As you look at the report, you recognize they did a great job of first analyzing the overall market conditions in our community, looking at things like demographics and economic drivers, and then looking at what the forecast might be for three very specific areas, hospitality, retail, and office opportunities, including the kind of demand that we can forecast over the course of the next several years. In the analysis, they then take consideration of what might happen next with the property. They look at two scenarios specifically, one a partial demolition and one a full demolition, and the impacts that may or may not have on each of those three areas, and the way that it might present the property more favorably for margin purposes. I didn't want to address much in the way that included Mr. Grigors, but it would appear that the greatest opportunity for the property lies in full demolition, although there is some opportunity available for partial demolition, keeping a part of the existing building available for office development. The findings are pretty complete, pretty well put together, and I'm very pleased with Kimley Horn. I answer any questions?
We certainly concur that Kimley Horn has done an excellent job of looking at current market conditions. As you've had an opportunity to look through the report, you can see that they are looking at leasable space in our market area, they're looking at rates, they're looking at the types of space that would be used. But most concerned to us is what the market would bear, what we would really see in an adaptive reuse of that property, whether that is used for office space, whether that is used for some type of, again, adaptive reuse in some medical environment, assisted living, those types of uses as well. So, they've done a very thorough job of looking at that data. I draw your attention particularly to page 40 of the report. That's where you'll see their recommendations, and I know that was a concern that we certainly expressed to them, is that as they worked through it as a market analysis, we wanted to make sure that they were indeed making recommendations to us, and again, you will find that in section eight, beginning on page 40. As Mr. Deaton indicated, they're identifying some of the reuse challenges that we would have with the property, and then they offered to us either a clean slate scenario, and they give us the pros and cons of that, as well as what we would anticipate as forecasted demand, and then also partial demolition scenario, again, looking at the pros and cons of that scenario, and also the forecasted scenario of demand under that as well. Also draw to your attention is section 8.4, their statement of opinion. That is probably the real meat of the report, and they are making certain recommendations to us based on their analysis of the market, and again, on 8.5, the recommended next steps that they would be proposing. We offer the report to you tonight as information, and then as you would direct us moving forward, what actions you may would like for us to take concerning that property as well. We know that we'll have additional discussions moving forward. Some of those will certainly need to be done in executive session as we entertain specific uses of that property, but the market analysis, we wanted to share publicly and to make sure that you were aware of the findings of that report as well. Again, any questions that you may have at this time concerning the data that's been presented or next steps for us as we would anticipate moving forward?
Counsel?
We offer that as information at this point. We entered into your record. In conclusion of my report, I would like to ask council to consider three executive session items this evening. One of those is a personnel matter concerning our building and development standards department. One is economic development concerning a potential project, and a third is a contractual matter concerning a lease agreement that the city currently has for a piece of property. One personnel, one economic development, and one contractual.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. That concludes my report. I do believe that our guests are going to be excused at this time to receive their prizes in the lobby, and again, we thank them for coming and joining us this evening.
appointments to boards and commissions. We have an opening in District 3. Ms. Booker, do you have any news in that regard?
We do, thankfully. I want to make a motion to appoint Linda Holmes. She's a resident of the City of Greer, lives in Chartwell Estates. She's currently very excited about becoming involved with the city, furthering herself and learning more about it, and I think she would serve this position very well. So, I'll make a motion to appoint Linda Holmes.
We'll entertain a second to that. Have a motion and a second. Any further questions in regards to Ms. Holmes' service? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
And I believe that gives us a fully appointed recreation association board at this point, so we'll be ready to do some work. We'll move on to items of new business, then, the first of which is the staffing for the adequate fire and emergency response grants. This is our SAFER grants, an opportunity for us to utilize grant funding to address needs in our fire and public safety, and some long-term relief in that regard as we bring them eventually on to our system. The chief, are you, floor is yours, sir?
Basically, we're coming tonight to ask for me to apply for the grant. The SAFER grant is a personnel grant. We would be applying for four personnel to get our staffing back up to the 2006 ones. This would give us 12 personnel per year. This also would help us to address some staffing concerns that were outlined in the ISO report, just for your information on personnel. In 2007, when we were fully staffed, 12 per year, we had a 9.89 of possible 15 points. In the 2014 report, we had 6.8 of 15 points, so we lost 3.05 points. That's the loss of paid personnel, and some volunteers were falling to that staffing level, too. We wanted to entertain, again, the SAFER grant is 100% managed for two years. In the past, it was the percentage that we had in pay this time around is 100% for two years. The third year, the city would have the opportunity to choose to keep those personnel in the event. We would hope that they're always planned to keep them, but in the event of an economic downturn, they're under no obligation to keep those personnel further than just in two years. Do you want to answer any questions?
Okay. This item will require action, and for the purpose of discussion and questions, for the chief, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
It's removed.
Have a motion and a second. Have a motion and a second. Floor is open for questions or discussion.
You said that in the third year, do we have to fully fund it, or in the third year if things go south? Because I mean, in here it says that the city would have to fully fund the positions.
Third year, you either have to choose to fully fund it or partially fund it, but you're not under obligation to fully fund all four positions for the third year because if the economic downturn is something along those lines.
If economic conditions warrant that we could not fund the positions in the third year, then we have the option to discontinue the grant.
We're under no obligation to pay that.
Correct.
All right. If we get this grant, these four positions, does the grant money follow a specific person, or say if one leaves, do we get another one to replace that position?
It follows a position.
Doesn't follow the person?
Not the person, the position. We have to demonstrate the number of positions that we had at the beginning of the grant period, and then we're eligible to add four positions. Again, you're right, if they come or go during the grant period, that's irrelevant to the monitoring of the grant.
Right.
And of course, as we've attempted to do some moderate ramp-up in that department, I would not anticipate that we would do any additional ramp-up over the three-year grant period. We would simply take those four at one time. But instead of us adding one, and adding one, and adding one, or two, 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 this would enable us to bring the four in immediately and then have two years to prepare for the funding of those over that cycle.
The grant also would pay for items such as uniforms, physicals, some of that nature that's required in the process.
Chief, if I'm not mistaken, this is sort of a pre-qualifying round, is it not? You're asking permission to go forward with the grant so that there's no surprises as you apply, is that the way this works?
If I asked, you didn't even have to ask permission. Once the grant was awarded, we could come back to you and ask. Now, they're asking in advance, that is the intent of the organization to keep those personnel unless, you know, reasons of economic downturn, something would occur. They want that advance, that is now.
Is this a late 2015 or early 2016 grant? Do you know what the timeframe is for applications and then awards?
Late 2015, probably came the way that he came, going 2016.
Kind of what I thought. Okay.
What's the dollar amount of grant?
Is it probably, that's a good question. I didn't bring the numbers with me tonight because, you know, based on this year's salary, we have last year's numbers, but we'd have to calculate based on this year. It'll be the salaries of four firefighter entry-level positions, plus the cost of the physicals and the cost of the actual uniforms and the stuff to go with it. Be glad to do those information to you. And a ballpark figure roughly, probably in the neighborhood of salaries alone and benefits, probably the $200,000 range, plus the cost of the uniforms in this budget per year.
Have a motion and a second. Other questions, comments?
I would just say that I would anticipate, and I would hope, that at the end of the two years, that we would be in a position where we, yes, we definitely, we're on solid ground, maybe even talking about another station by then, you know?
Well, I don't think we're, you know, we continue to look at the one-on-one side corridors needing to address that as far as future, whether it be joint use type station in the air, or how the cities choose to go after that.
Motion and second. Call for last comments. Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Thank you, sir. Got the first reading of ordinance number 2-2015. This is an ordinance to amend the City of Greer Code of Ordinances, Chapter 90 Utilities, Article 2 Sewer Use and Pretreatment by repealing it in its entirety and replacing it with the following and adding Attachment A, Attachment B, Attachment C, and Attachment D. We'd like to welcome Mr. Jeff Tuttle, who is the general manager of the Greer CPW. We thank him for joining this evening and giving us some information and insight into the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination Waste System. So, the floor is yours, sir.
Well, and if you want some good reading for tonight and having trouble falling asleep, please, please read that. But first of all, I'd like to thank each of you for the opportunity to be here this evening and to address this issue with you. So, Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Grigors, thank you very much for the opportunity. Before I get into it, I'd like to introduce a couple of my colleagues from the Greer CPW. One is David Heinkock. David manages our water distribution systems, as well as our Maple Creek wastewater treatment permit, and another who is a pretreatment coordinator for the Greer CPW. They are truly the experts in this endeavor. A couple of things I'd like to go over with you. Action was taken earlier in January by the commissioners for the Greer Commission of Public Works to approve a resolution which adopted draft changes in our pretreatment And what's prompting the action today? That's probably one thing, is why we've taken this today. There's two things that trigger a change in your pretreatment program and how that affects the city, is you take our pretreatment program and you incorporate that into your ordinance for the City of Greer. One is the EPA and South Carolina Department of Health and Environmental Controls requires that you look at your plan and you update it every five years. So, one is every five-year requirement. Actually, this was a type of, last time it was updated was officially January 2008, which Mr. Mayor Danner signed the existing pretreatment ordinance. The other thing that would trigger a change in that is when you have a change or updated permit, MPDES permit, which we did receive on the Maple Creek wastewater treatment plan in August of 2014. So, those are the two things that trigger it. Actually, in this particular case, we're getting triggered based, one, that time element, as well as we did have a change, and we had a permanent reissue for the Maple Creek wastewater treatment plan. And that change in permit enables us to, it puts in permit levels up to 7.5 million gallons a day, treatment capacity in Maple Creek. Current capacity a day is 5 million, but that plan is designed to be expanded to 2.5 million gallon increments in terms of additional capacity, up to the total of 10 million gallons a day. So, that's what's triggering it right now. The one thing I have to emphasize is what we're seeking today is an approval of the draft changes being submitted to DHEC, and I'll talk about that process. The current ordinance stays in place until which time we have received an approved plan by DHEC. But they've reviewed it, they've asked us questions, asked clarifications, we've made the dossier of public approval process and so on. So, approval is being sought for the draft changes along. The DHEC process is, first of all, you write up your pretreatment program, which we have done. We submit that to DHEC. DHEC has a chance to review that document, ask clarifying questions. We have inter-adjournments back and forth. They might request some changes in the plan document, program document. We work that through. Then, once DHEC is satisfied, we're satisfied with that document, and it goes out to public comment. Then, it goes through your public comment process, you know, get that public comments, DHEC does. Those are shared with the Greer CPW, and we work through the process of any additional modifications or changes being made at that point in time. And then finally, the final program is approved by DHEC. Long story. Long story short, that process can take anywhere from a minimum of probably six months to the more realistic timeframe of anywhere from 18 to 24 months, but it could be a couple year process. So essentially, that's the DHEC process that we're going through. So we're right now at stage one, submitting draft changes to the program to DHEC. Summary changes, for one thing I'd like to emphasize is first and foremost is that there are no major or substantive changes in the pretreatment plan. There are no, and I'll emphasize that, there are no substantive or major changes. We have sent out a document that highlights in yellow all the additions to the plan over the current program or ordinance, or actual ordinance, any deletions, and so you have that in front of you, and then you also have a final copy as well as to what it looks like. The revisions or summary of changes, I'll summarize this way. The vast majority, in terms of the limitations that we specify in terms of certain output of pretreatment programs, are based on two things. One is that there's an analysis then on the water coming in, sewer, the inflow coming into the plant. And then also, there's analysis of stream flow. We release back out to South Tide River about, what, five miles south of Maple Creek, and goes back out, and so it depends on the flow of the South Tide River, how much flow is going in there. Those types of analysis is what dictates your limitations. And I'll clarify what those exact limitations are, if they have any effect, how that's gone up and how it's gone down. The other big change, or not really a big change, because there's no big change, but this provides more flexibility in how we might work with customers. Today, then you'll find in there is a matrix for determining grease trap ratings, and that matrix is all based on gallons, how much is going through that grease trap basically. What we're recommending is we remove that and provides us more flexibility to look at such things as the type of food service establishment, well, so the type of items we'd be looking at is the type of food prepared, type and number of dishes used, hours of operation, number of seats, and other issues. So instead of just using strictly gallons to determine a solution for a food service establishment, we could utilize other variables in determining what's the best overall solution for that customer in building a market system. The other items that we have are, we have additional language and reference from federal and state general pretreatment regulations. Before, we had a number of references to Environmental Protection Agency regulations, South Carolina DHEC regulations, and so we just reference those in the document. Today, we incorporate the actual language of those regulations in as opposed to a reference. That's another change. We have addition of enforcement response plan. You can find that on page 38 to 44 of your document. There's no differences in terms of penalties or anything, but it provides some nature in which general manager can contact the person who's in violation, notify them, work with them, as to get compliant with our pretreatment program. And then we have some other miscellaneous changes. Now, attorneys always want to make a few changes here and there in terms of language as well as staff changes. So that's a summary of the changes, and those are all, we do have a summary document of all the changes. In terms of limitations, and this is probably one thing you're probably very interested in, is these are discharge limitations. We actually relaxed limitations on seven parameters, and those are stated up there, things like arsenic, total chromium, hexavalent chromium, copper, lead, mercury, zinc, actually there are limitations relaxed under the pretreatment guidelines, based on flow and so on. The more stringent limitations are around six parameters, primarily cadmium, cyanide, nickel, selenium, silver, and phenol. Now, the one thing I must emphasize here is that even though we have these more stringent limitations, when you look at the historical discharge of our existing permitted industries, all of our pretreatment users are well within these new limitations. So nobody's butting up against a more restricted parameter around cadmium, or nickel, or something of that nature that would jeopardize their permit or viability as a business. So that's basically the summary of the changes. I'd be happy to answer any questions left in my head.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, questions, comments?
Just as a matter of curiosity, I know there, in the past, has been an incidence or two that regional sewer treatment providers have traced or linked PCBs back to our area. How do you reverse track where somebody is illegally dumping chemicals like that? What's the process for that? How do they do it? Is it just good detective work, or is it just good detective work, or what?
Good detective work, luck. And as you're aware, some before last, it was discovered that we did have some, several grease traps in the area, and actually, if you look at Greenville and Spartanburg County altogether, I think there was about 23 grease traps. I know that contaminated PCB, in which that went to, went into a wastewater and then to re-wa, processing, finding it there in Spartanburg. You go on, that's a couple of things that we're doing to help prevent that. And prevention is probably the foremost thing. We have, both Spartanburg, Greenville County, which is served by re-wa, Renewable Water Resources, has implemented an requirement that anybody that has grease trap, grease traps pumped and brought to re-wa for processing, must have their grease traps secured. The lids have to be locked, put in behind, they lock the fence, they have to be tested ahead of time, they have to be certified, and they have to go through this process. And Spartanburg County is actually encouraging the same thing, increase traps to be locked up. So actually, we did take action this past November, in which we sent a letter out to all food service establishments, encouraging them, it's a requirement that we send them to one, and the general direction is everybody's going to require securing, blocking, certifying those, is to take the initiative to do that on our, take that initiative. It's cheap insurance on someone dumping illegally into your grease trap, and one, incurring significant cost for your own cleanup, but also all the contaminants and types of it as well. We do continuous, we do some monitoring in our system here and there, and we'll continue to look at that. But it's been proven to be a costly alternative to re-wa Spartanburg Santeria Sewer to clean up contamination.
Is that a state violation? Is that a felony at the state level?
It comes into, the primary issue comes in, it's state EPA, primarily regulated by the U.S. The biggest restriction how Renewable Water Resources found, found is, they're testing at their wastewater treatment plant, tell them, and they see contaminants, and typically what they would like to do is, all that, the cake, the sludge coming off that plant, traditionally is going to land application. And they can take that, the waste cake, after processing, and it's a good fertilizer, and take that, people can use it for fertilizer on their farms. The one requirement is that that waste that's being land applied cannot contain more than 10 parts per million of PCB. You can land apply up to, anywhere below 10 parts per million on a field for fertilizer. Anything above that, then you can't. What re-wa has adopted is a conservative approach, that if they have any PCB that's detectable in that, in that sludge, the output, they will not land apply, and it will go to a landfill application, which is much more expensive, so they have to truck it out to a landfill and pay tithes and all, so. The wastewater treatment, the creek that we operate, we do not process fats, oils, and grease there, so we don't process them. But if something got into the sewer system, got into the Maple Creek, that may be a constant problem that issues there. And actually, right now, we do not do any land application of our output, Maple Creek, we just send that to a landfill. So we don't do any land application of that.
I guess the question, for those that get caught illegally dumping, is that a state violation or a federal violation, or both?
State and federal.
Okay.
State and federal, both. We know that the South Carolina Law Enforcement Division has been conducting an ongoing investigation of those issues that they found around the state.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thanks very much.
Counsel requires action on our behalf, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
Sir, move.
Have a motion and a second. Further discussion, comments? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. We have the first reading of ordinance three dash 2015, an ordinance approving a major change to a design review district, which is a DRD of certain real property inside the City of Greer. Action will be required. Mr. Pace will bring us information in that regard.
Thank you, Mayor Counsel. In regards to a major change, I don't think we've done one in quite some time, but this is a design review district, if you remember, Greystone Cottage is being built and constructed out on Dillard Road and Gibbs Shoal, is facing near completion out there except for the fourth and fifth phase, and there was options to purchase another piece of property directly on the corner that did not take place, and it has sold to an individual, and that individual plans on the main there in the house. So therefore, that piece is out of the puzzle in regards to that. But they have, the developer has presented to us reasons to close an ingress egress point that was going to be on Gibbs Shoal Road. They already have three access points from Dillard Road, and staff has reviewed this, engineering has reviewed this, the fire marshal has reviewed this, and the planning commission has reviewed it, and all recommended for the approval of the proposed change to the PD, or DRD, excuse me, and the reduction of the ingress egress point for that particular section.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property engineer of the property or representative of the property with us this evening, do you care to address counsel in regards to any additional information that may be pertinent to a decision?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I'm Chuck Reicher, right consulting in Greenville, members of city council and mayor. The reason we're looking at this is, like Mr. Pace said, there are existing three entrances on the Dillard Road, and we recently laid it out, we have entrance on the Gibbs Shoal Road, that corner now is not going to be part of it, so, you know, we don't have as many residents up there. And then we started looking at, we met with Gaysberg Traffic Engineer, she did a study for us, and said, you know, take that entrance out, not through anything. Part of the concern was cut through traffic. As you know, Greystone Cottage is a private development, there's private drives through there, and some of the residents actually came to the developer and were concerned about where the entrance was located, if the traffic at Dillard Road and Gibbs Shoal Road gets the point, they could cut through this development and come back out on Dillard Road or go up through this development through there, or they get up to Gibbs Shoal. So part of it was just the concern of cut through traffic. The residents, I have one of the members of the homeowners association here, who actually speak also, like, they came, they're in favor of not putting this entrance in, just because of their concerns about cut through traffic, because these are private drives that are owned and maintained by the homeowners association. We looked at also where this drive approach would be, relationship to other existing drives, and the concern about what this drive could do as far as creating conflicts along Gibbs Shoal Road. So I think just all of that, you know, we came to Mr. Pace and requested that this drive be removed, and she, the fire marshal, the city engineer, that Gaysberg Traffic Engineer that will study for us, presented to the city, that she also recommended this drive be eliminated and not have any adverse impacts on any of those systems out there.
Thank you, sir. For the purposes of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
Sir.
Have a motion and a second. Floor is open for discussion or questions. Comes with a recommendation from staff. Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. We have the first reading of ordinance number five dash 2015. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by 1010 Popular Drive Extension Land Trust, located on Popular Drive Extension by 100% petition, and to establish a zoning classification of R12 for said property. Mr. Pace?
Mayor Counsel, again, this property is to be, or requesting be annexed into the city, and zoning of the property located on Popular Drive Extension. And also will submit to SCDOT for annexation of 151 feet of Pleasant Drive and 591 feet of Popular Drive Extension, closing any gaps we have in previous annexations. This is a small, .329 acre lot, it would be proposed for a single-family dwelling only, and therefore, they're bringing it to us for city services at this time.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property or a representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Let the record reflect, no one indicated so. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
Sir.
Second.
Have a motion and a second in that regard, further conversation or discussion. Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel will move to item E on the agenda, the first reading of ordinance number six dash 2015. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by Brandy and Matthew Van Patton, located at 100 Peachtree Drive, by 100% petition, and to establish a zoning classification of R20 for said property. Mr. Pace?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Mayor, this is what the definition of a Again, Mayor, this is what the definition of a true donut hole is in relationship to annexation. There's still two properties, the side of this property that have not been annexed to the city on Peachtree Drive. However, the owners of 100 Peachtree Drive and 136 feet of Greenville County Road that we already have property on both sides of, except for this section, are requesting to be zoned, it's a .58 of an acre lot, and it does contain a single family dwelling, and they are doing this in order to be providing, one, the lower utility rates for in-city rates and in-city services that would be offered to them with fire release and sanitation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property here? Let the record reflect that Mr. Van Patton passed on that opportunity to speak to counsel, we'll excuse him this evening. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. We have the first reading of ordinance 7-2015, an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by Tenet Holdings Incorporated located at 2204 Country Club Road by 100 percent petition and to establish a zoning classification of DRD for said property. Mr. Pace?
Again, Mayor and Counsel, this is the property located at Country Club, Country Club Road, we're looking at annexing 294 feet of that road along with to the center line, north of the center line, approximately 466 feet of Arlington Road. The request is for the DRD, it contains 3.76 acres, and the purpose of this is to construct 31 unit townhome community for this property. It currently contains a abandoned, single family dwelling and some out structures on that property, and again, public hearing will be held February 16th for the zoning of this property with the planning commission.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Let the record indicate that no one indicated so. Entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And I will, one of those is a yes and one's a second, so, let you sort that out, Ms. Duncan. Mr. Griffin, second, Mr. Bettis made the motion. Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, the last item of business this evening is the first reading of ordinance number 8-2015, this is an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of any and all interest in certain real property inside the city of Greer. Pace?
Thank you, Mayor Counsel. Again, this is property that's located adjacent to Century Park that the city purchased a couple of years ago in order to maintain a sewer right-of-way, and the front of this property, as it adjoins the park, the city has been in negotiations with a developer of the piece adjacent to it for the apartment complex, tied with the residents at Precy Creek with approximately 250 apartment units being constructed on that site. Again, we have entered into that purchase agreement, and as you were instructed, or as you instructed, city administrator, you can enter into this agreement, and bringing that before you deny for a period.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. Get a little bad.
We did have a few citizens a quicker than our. I did see some hands shoot up, I think, so, there are some people that are still awake, they did catch that. Any additional information in that regard, Mr. Greers?
No, sir. You're familiar with the property site, and of course, what we, we're negotiating a sell price of $85,000 for the, for the 1.02 acre site. Those funds would be held in escrow for improvements at Century Park site.
Entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, floor is open for discussion. Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, on executive session, we've got three items to discuss tonight, one personnel, one economic development, and one contractual. I'll entertain a motion that we move into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, on executive session, we've considered one personnel matter, one economic development matter, and one contractual matter, taking no action in regards to these, do I hear a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.